Please rise for the
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
President Hammond here. Vice President Daley here. Trustee Clements here. Trustee Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, welcome. John Hedlund is joining us via FaceTime this evening as he's away for business. I'd like to introduce Andrew Natchampkin, who is our new student advisor to the board for 2018 to 19. Welcome, Andrew. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
And just note that the next meeting of the Haldane Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM in this room. With that said, I'll turn over to Dr. Benato.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond, and welcome, members of the community. Welcome, Andrew. Ms. Sniffin and I had a chance to sit down with Andrew last week, I think, and talk a little bit about his role on the board, and we're very excited for him to be here and the perspective that I know he seeks to bring to the board and our board meeting process throughout the year. So, welcome aboard, Andrew. Just a few notes for the board and for the community. The New York State Assessment results were released to the public last week, so for interested community members, certainly you can go online on the SED website and see the results of Haldane students, for those who took the assessments. And parent reports should come home soon, so those are sent home actually from the RIC, the Regional Information Center, and those results should be sent home, I would hope, by the end of the month through the RIC. In looking at the results, again, just very broadly, we haven't fully dug into them yet. It did appear that Haldane students, relative to their performance, continued to do well relative to their peers at the state and at the county level, exceeding the state and county averages significantly in some places. However, it's important to remember that the tests still remain relative, pretty controversial. And the commissioner was quite guarded in her remarks regarding the assessments in that we actually shouldn't be using the 2018 assessments as a point of comparison to 2017 due to changes with how the assessments were scored. So, it's information for the community's sake and something that should be coming home soon if you had your child participate in the state assessment system. And again, that's for grades, children who were in grades three through eight last school year. Additionally, I know Laura and I spoke, and I wanted to provide a brief update on the Cove Care support that's being provided here at Haldane. I know that our work with Cove Care was a topic of discussion through the budget process last school year. We've maintained our relationship with Cove Care for prevention education at the K-9 levels, and that's been a long-term relationship that we've had with them for that work. That's support that's offered during school hours, delivered through or via two prevention educators who work with our school system, both at a whole class level as part of freshman seminar, for example, where targeted support should it be needed throughout the school year. Another layer of that, which was discussed last year, was the clinical support and enlisting the support of Cove Care to provide an initial layer of clinical support this school year, and that would be offered approximately one time per week. We do not yet have a service agreement established with Cove Care to provide that level of support. That's something we're still working on with them. We do have a meeting in an attempt to finalize an agreement with them by the end of this month, so I just wanted to provide that update to the board. This is a grant-funded support, so sometimes with grants, there's particular items that we have to make sure we ensure, that Cove Care's looking for. There's some details there that we still need to work out. So, it's our desire to do so, but I want to be upfront that it's still not yet in place. And ideally, once it does become in place, it would serve as additional counseling services, not only for students, but also for their families.
You said, "grant-funded"? I don't, what grant?
I think Cove Care is able to provide the service to us through a grant that they have.
Thank you.
It's not a grant that comes to us.
That's what I didn't understand.
It's a grant that comes to them.
And how soon are we hoping to get it available for families?
Well, we would have to first establish the service agreement, and then Cove Care would be responsible for identifying a clinician to provide that level of support. I do not know where their staffing is at, if they have someone on board who's ready to go, or once we finalize the service agreement, they now initiate the process for bringing in a clinician to provide this level of support. In only being one day a week, my hope would be that there's already somebody on staff who they're prepared to coordinate assigning to us, but that'll be something that we have to work out in that next meeting.
So, end of the year, end of the school year, end of the calendar year?
Yeah, as long as we're a-go and we can work out the service agreement, our hope would be that that service can be provided relatively quickly. But, that next meeting's going to be important to flesh some of that out.
Dr. Benato, you had said that you've identified some space where...
We have. So, we have space in this building, and that was part of some work we were doing towards the end of the summer because that was a point of concern. And interestingly, not to get too far in the weeds on it, but as part of the grant, we have to secure space, but we also have to guarantee that that space is actually a certain square footage for the clinician to serve with and unique piece. So, that's something that they have to come observe the space, make sure it's appropriate or meets the guidelines that are established in the grant guidelines for their funding source.
Great. Would it be appropriate, I know you're going to keep us updated when it gets put in place and all that stuff, but would it be appropriate to loop that into the social-emotional workshop topic, you know, the update that we were asking for?
Yeah, so...
At the end of the year, just as a...
Yeah, would it appear, I was watching some old board meetings, because that's what I do in my free time.
[laughing]
And it seemed that Dr. Shoah had provided a report last school year outlining the various clinicians that we have on campus, also the other agencies that we contract with or with whom we have a relationship, staffing ratios. That's all something that should be presented to the board on a yearly basis. So, whether it be as part of the social-emotional presentation, learning presentation at the end of the year, or as part of, we should be doing like an annual pupil personnel report, and it'd be included as part of that. At some point, it should be a component of one of those two reports.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right. Additionally, I wanted to provide an update on the elementary school bathroom renovation. Unfortunately, we're not, this type of project doesn't move as quickly as others because it's somewhat dependent on processes at the state level, once we submit the material for their review. But we did receive notice that the technical review of the project is complete, so the specs are all checked out, and now a project manager, which is good news, which means now a project manager will be assigned to the project to finish the completion of the review with Ms. Dino in her office. So, that part usually goes pretty quickly. So, we're anticipating being in a position to put out bids, a request for bids, in the spring, and then that's work that has to be completed when students are not in school. So, that lines us up to complete the work in the summer. So, that, it's another year or so, we can anticipate it being complete, but the technical review is the part that takes the most time, and we're beyond that now, so we should be able to move fairly quickly. And given the scope of the project, we don't have any other periods of the school year where we could identify as completing that project. For example, spring break or a winter break of sorts, it's going to extend beyond a week's worth of work, so we have to look to the summer to complete it.
So, Dr. Benato, even though there's maybe, it sounds like maybe been a little bit of a delay in terms of the technical review at State Ed, that our timeline for the project is still what we intended it to be. The work was always going to be conducted in the summer of 2019. Is that correct?
I would imagine, I'm going to turn to Ann on that, just because it predates May.
Yes, that is what we anticipated, so we are on schedule.
And we're expecting to do both bathrooms, girls and boys, at the same time?
Correct.
And that's one of the reasons, I assume, that it needs to be done over the summer? You couldn't like just do one?
That, and just the length of time that there'll be no bathrooms, and then, you know, the construction would really interfere, the noise level, the debris, all of that would really interfere. We don't want students around any of that.
Yep.
And just one last note, I just wanted to acknowledge our faculty and staff and Mr. Salem for a great homecoming week, which we celebrated last week. It was a great week of school spirit and athletic competition. Andrew, saw you in the ultimate frisbee game.
[laughing]
Definitely height advantage over some of the underclassmen.
Yeah, that's why they wanted me.
Did a good job. And I just also want to congratulate the Hall of Fame inductees. I had the opportunity to attend the Hall of Fame induction on Saturday. It was a great ceremony. It was great to, I heard some great stories about Haldane and our athletic facilities years ago. I asked Mr. Shields, Packy, "So, where was the track?" And he said, "It was a pasture down near the river." But what was most impressive was how each of the inductees, to a T, whether it was an inductee who was here in 1960 or the '60s, to those who were with us just not too long ago, did not speak of their individual accomplishments. Each one of them, to a person, spoke of the influence that their teachers and that their coaches had on them, and the influence that their teammates had on them, which I thought was really special. Having been to Hall of Fame inductions before, that is unique, and I think that's something that's unique about our community and the relationships that are formed between and among classmates, and also the faculty and the parents who are helping raise our kids. And it was a great reminder of the importance of team and the collective effort beyond the individual. So, great, a great ceremony, and I was really glad to be a part of it. With that, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much for those updates. Okay, moving on to committee minutes. The Buildings and Grounds meeting minutes from September 12th, as well as the Code of Conduct minutes from September 24th are there for our viewing.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Just with respect to Buildings and Grounds, I alluded to it during our last meeting. Ann and I will provide an overview of some of the discussion that's occurred at Buildings and Grounds at our next board meeting. We felt it's important, we have some movement, or we're prepared, we hope, to make some movement with respect to some facilities work, and we want to update the board a little more detail at our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any communication from the public at this time?
No.
Okay, thanks. The information reports are here for our viewing, and we will have them on again next meeting, next business meeting to approve. Consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I did want to note that item number nine, we are in the process of replacing our portable radio systems because they are severely outdated and not working properly, and if we have an emergency situation, we want to be sure those are up and running.
I just want to appreciate Mr. Shelters for his work on that, both last school year and in this school year. He was really able to provide a pretty comprehensive overview of what we'll get out of this product, that we're not getting out of our current product, you know, in addition to not only being outdated, just being in a better state of readiness where there to be an emergency, a weather-related emergency or any other, for us to coordinate action on campus, or even off-campus if it was with our transportation vehicles and whatnot. So, this puts us in a much better spot.
And Ann's memo seemed to suggest that it's actually going to be a cheaper option.
Right. Which is great. We'll be saving on cell service. Okay. Well, actually, this just occurred to me this second. Plus, it's switching from some cellphone lines to these portable radios. Well, given that we know that cellphone access in the community is problematic, I'm assuming that these are more reliable.
Yeah.
That's great. That's really great.
Yeah.
I'm very excited to hear that. I am. Yeah. No, because there's so many places you can end up around here and not have access to cellphone service. Exactly. And access to our drivers, our bus drivers.
Yeah, so this also includes access to our drivers, who obviously would be out in the area, and that's important for us to have direct connection for a few of these radios or hubs, if you will, to our transportation vehicles if needed. Someone like myself or Ms. Dino or the district office staff will have that capability in the event of emergency.
Great, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question about number four, the teacher aide, and my question is two, I have two questions. One, I might have lost track of a different teacher aide that had retired, and is this a replacement, or is this an addition?
Replacement.
It's a replacement. And two, I found Spanish speaking to be an interesting note, because I don't think I've seen that before, I could be wrong, but is that the, was there an interest in a Spanish-speaking aide? Are we like, is that a need, is there a need for that?
There's a need based on the need of the student.
We did have one.
That it would be supporting.
Last year.
We did have one.
Mm-hmm. But then no longer needed the service because I believe the students were able to, they came along, and now I think we require a student that requires, right, translation.
Oh, great.
Because the students that the aide last year was working with, they took the, they tested out, so they took the NICE SLAT, and so it was determined that their English was strong enough that they no longer required services.
A Spanish-speaking aide, but now we have another student that does.
Right.
Gotcha. Cool, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. These are the Board of Education workshop topics that we began discussing last meeting. John, I don't know if you had a chance to review, if you had any question or comment in addition to what we spoke about at the last meeting.
No, I would just say, thank you for putting in the finance budgeting overview on our idea. Appreciate that.
Excellent, okay. Any, actually, one thought for the social-emotional learning. We did just receive an email today from Ms. Danielle Pack McCarthy, who works with the town of Phillips Town. I think it'd be great to have her somehow participate in that June 18th meeting, if we can make it possible. So, we'll keep that, put it out there to her. I didn't get a chance to respond yet, but that may provide an opportunity for Danielle to come.
Absolutely. Just one additional comment, if I may. So, there were a few additional recommendations or suggestions that were made at the last meeting. I included those at the bottom, and it's not to say that we can't address those, we're just going to include those throughout the year as we see we have time to, as opposed to scheduling them for specific dates, because things will inevitably come up throughout the school year that the board may want additional information on, so we're just trying to be mindful of time. So, we will backfill, or plug those in, I should say, as opportunities present throughout the year.
And I think we mentioned that some of them could be weaved in, like the post-secondary support for students, we talked that maybe that could be weaved into the high school detail report.
Correct.
Right. I thought about this after the meeting, but don't we usually have workshop topics related to the budget, or have we done that in the past? Am I misremembering? And since those are no longer workshop topics, is the expectation that budgeting will just be built into really all of our meetings? I mean, and that's, is what ends up happening.
So, I don't want to speak for Ann, but I'll just take a shot. We're going to develop a budget calendar, which will outline various budget presentations that we're going to provide throughout, some during workshop meetings and some during regular business meetings, because we're going to be on a schedule for that. So, those will be on top, and that's one of the caveats to those other proposed items, is as we're developing the budget and spending time in a budget presentation, we may also have the high school detail report and may decide that's plenty for that, for that particular evening. So, you should see that calendar in November, I'd imagine, sometime in the next six months.
It'll be earlier this year. It's usually in January, but I think that we talked about starting a little earlier.
Part earlier, but the calendar outlining the schedule for the budget development process usually we would provide to the board, I'd imagine, late October, early November.
Sure.
Sure. You're going to have it soon. Sorry, Ann.
And I feel like, starting in January anyway, every meeting, we talk about budget. And actually, we added some meetings to talk about budget last year.
I guess we did.
So, I think also I want to add that it came up in a discussion that right in the middle of budget season are the elementary, middle, and high school reports to go into detail, and that might change a little bit, because, you know, you might get tired. We've been seeing the same slides for a few years now about the educational rationale. This could be geared toward that, so you really know what's going on for the funds.
Right, and those, the administrators of those buildings could actually provide insight into, you know, with their report.
Some of their needs and priorities, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, we'll put those, are we all good with these dates and...
And Laura?
Yes.
The only other thing that I would, that I would ask is that for, or suggest, is that for weaving through, per Jen's comment, if we can have technology and sort of the technology plan at the each school level woven through the school reports, I think that would be really helpful to give people an understanding of how we're using technology across the district.
So, John, we talked about that last time, and that can be something we can continue to discuss. Being somebody who's been on the technology integration, or the technology committee for the past year, and knowing that, correct me if I'm wrong, that really gaining a much better understanding about what's happening related to education technology is something that Dr. Benato wants to do during this year. I, again, being someone who's been a part of this process for a couple of years, I want to make sure that he has enough time to really get a handle on what's happening in the district, what's happening at the different levels, before we begin to ask for an accountability. I don't disagree with you that that kind of reporting is really important, it's something that the board has asked for, for a number of years. I think the fact that we have never gotten that report indicates that there may, things may not be as clear, as well articulated, as I am going to anticipate Dr. Benato wants them to be. So, again, that was my recommendation last time, to think that maybe, maybe having that kind of technology report during the school year this year might not be the most productive thing, but that's, that's not my decision to make. I just wanted to point out that I'd made those comments. And I want to agree, I agreed with you at the last meeting. I think we need some time. We've had different technology reports, at least since I've been on the board, that... Less than... Less than... Right. So, I think we just need some time to evaluate, and obviously, we know we're using Google Classroom, and if you're looking to hear some of those things, John, I'm sure the building administrators can explain, but in terms of technology and infrastructure and all that, I think we need to hold off.
Yeah, to be very clear, what I'm asking is for a current status of what's actually happening, with no indication of what our goals are, what our plans are to reach them, it's just, what are we doing right now?
Yeah, so, I think that's realistic. Part of one area that we have to somewhat sort through this year in preparation for next school year is the status of our technology infrastructure, and then also our program or integration thereof. So, that's something that very well may come as part of the budget process, if I think that's, there's an influence there that I want the board to consider as part of a budget recommendation that we would be making. So, that would be detail, or a level of detail that I would have to be investigating with the administration and in turn providing to the board, to define, you know, where we are and where perhaps we need to go, and what we need financially to get there. So, I would envision that being a component of the budget review that I'm doing. And then certainly, as the principals are presenting, you can ask them any technology-related questions regarding integration and that are going on in the schools. That's totally appropriate, so I appreciate the support, and you can give me three or four more hours in a day, I will take it right now. But, you know, I do think there's some background that may be relevant to John's question that we'll provide as well, so...
Yeah, that makes sense. Actually, and I should remember this while we're on the technology topic. So, what, what are our plans for purchasing technology, right? So, the district had been on this relatively ambitious plan of buying devices at different grades and rolling them out. I actually feel like recently I was looking at the appropriations report and maybe, and sort of seeing the line for technology. I can't remember, a lot of this is vague right now, I apologize. What are our plans for purchasing technology this year, and is that something that we, I actually would expect that you would do it thoughtfully, but...
Yeah, and it's also a regional concern, so I know, it's, the timing's great. We have a meeting with BOSI's next week with other local school districts to talk about how we are going about purchasing and whether, and also technology services, because we contract out for several services, and whether or not we could realize some efficiencies in that as well. So, it's a hot topic, but that certainly would be incorporated into any presentation for the board.
But I'm guessing there's not plans to like buy 100 Chromebooks this year and roll them out to a whole nother grade, or maybe that is something we're going ahead and...
Didn't we just purchase the fourth grader?
Right.
Fourth grade iPads or something?
And I don't have an overview of what we purchased for this school year right now.
Of course, yeah.
So, I can provide that to you after the meeting, but, so I don't know.
Okay.
What our plan was for this year.
And also, the Smart Schools Bond Act, have we utilized all of that funding? Those are things that we should probably consider.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, too. I feel like we had, I felt like Leah had given us a report at some point towards the end of last year.
There was a really clear plan for what was going to happen with that.
There was a clear plan, and then there was some excess money, and it was sent to something else, but it would be good to recap that.
Got it.
Okay, so, we're good with the workshop topics, so we can get those on the calendar? Actually, so, I think in the principal's best interest, and maybe already planned for them to do that, they, I think for those presentations to be most beneficial, it, I'm trying to think of some way that we could pose, maybe see an outline of their, I don't know the best way to do this. I am thinking out loud that I don't want them to show up here and for us to have a lot of questions that they can't answer.
Oh, no, no, so...
I think we recommended...
Dr. Benato's on that.
We're on it.
And they were all here last time when we started talking about it. They were taking notes.
And the basic, the basic structure, we're adopting hopefully district goals in a few minutes. The building principals have been working in anticipation of the goals looking somewhat like they are in their form here, specific building-level goals that are related to those district goals. And I would approach this with their report being based on where they are at with their goals this year and the action plans that they've developed, or the roadmaps that they've developed, ideally to align those goals with our district goals, and to provide you with an overview of where they're at with that. Obviously, these are mid-year reports, so the work won't be complete. I think that's a good understanding. They may choose to incorporate additional items into their report, just somewhat, somewhat how we discussed earlier, but that's kind of going to, that should frame the basic structure of their report, where you're seeing an alignment between the goals we discussed as a, as a school district, and how that relates to the work that they're doing with their faculty and staff at a building level.
But it might be helpful to have that reach out to us to say, you know, the elementary report is going to be on this date, and we're doing, you know, Mr. Wallach's going to talk about his goals and where he's at. Is there anything else that the board would like him to touch on? Any follow-up stuff? I'm sure all of us would like to hear about, you know, there's different...
I think we talked about that at the last meeting. We suggested that we would, we would, you know, give some...
Interject a couple of suggestions.
Suggestions as to what we'd like to hear.
Yeah.
I know we talked about some science, curriculum, social-emotional learning, those are the two that are coming to my mind, but...
But even just updates on things that we've been talking about, the elementary library program, it'd be good to get an update on that, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, so we'll work together and get some thoughts down prior to those meetings.
Got it.
Okay, so, moving on to new business, the approval of the Haldane School District Goals for 2018-19. Are you ready?
Are you ready to approve them right now?
I think this is about the third time.
There's no more discussion? Okay. I just want to make sure.
Fourth time, maybe?
Wait, but I actually do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know.
I do have a question. Not about these goals. Those are great.
All right.
But I feel like, I'm sorry, I have a question.
I'm not going to adopt them.
No, I want to adopt them, but I also feel like we've made this, it feels, to me, it feels like we made this not explicit enough decision, or at least a decision that I don't understand fully, about whether or not the board is going to have distinct goals, right? And so I feel like there was, I, I feel like we arrived at this place, and I don't remember there being a real explicit conversation about us not having our own goals, that these would be our goals as well, and our goals are always to support the district's goals anyway. But I want to make sure that we are, that it does make the most sense for us not to have some board-specific goals as well for this year. And even if it's just a repeat of the goal that we had last year, the fact that we have a much more explicit plan to work on the policy manual this year, that's something. I mean, I want to make sure that, that we are holding ourselves accountable, right? I mean, because it's pretty easy to say, like, we're going to do what we, not that it's easy, but like, we're going to support the superintendent and the district to meet the district goals, but I, I want to make sure that, that, yeah, that we are holding ourselves accountable to some of the things that we need to be doing.
I think we kind of discussed this at the, our original...
At our retreat. But I don't remember it being, I remember us sort of being like, oh yeah, these, these will be our goals as well, but I'm not sure I'm completely on board with that.
I think we identified that this is definitely something completely different than what we've been used to in the past. I'm just trying to refresh. So not that I disagree with you, I'm just talking out loud about what we discussed. This is definitely something different than we've done in the past. However, most of our goals have always been aligned with the superintendent's goals. And basically, the conclusion has been, well, do we really need separate goals? Because we are working together towards the same things for the district. I'm comfortable with one set of goals, for sure. We talked about policy, you know, and the entire review. That's been one of our goals, I feel like, for the past four years, or at least that I've been on. We consistently talk about communication. That's been one of our goals.
Right.
So I'm comfortable with just having one set of goals and incorporating, but that's me and...
And I brought up the same point, Peggy, and specifically, it was around the policy issue. I said, I felt like these three goals really do address board goals. The communication is in there, K-12 alignment, all that stuff that we've talked about in the past, it's all in here. The only thing that's not in here that felt very board-specific was our policy goal. And then Laura said, but, we're making a policy committee, and by having a policy committee, which we have not had before, that kind of gives it its own ownership and creates some accountability, because the policy committee has to, you know, report to the board. And I was comfortable with that answer. I felt like that did give policy some weight that it was missing for me in this, in this plan.
I agree that we're good with this, but I also with the caveat that we should look at it again next year and make sure that we don't fall into a trap of, oh, it's good.
Right.
That we could have, we, make sure we leave it open for every year going, okay, do we still want to do this? Or do we need to make our own goals again this year?
And right.
That's a good point, Margaret. And we could try it this year.
We said we were going to try. I, I mean, that's what I recalled from the retreat, is that we said we would try it, because it is uncomfortable, right? It changes, not always easy. But Dr. Benante, we're, well, I'm willing to roll the punches.
Thank you for your support.
I just have a quick question. So I, I like the fact that we have shared goals and we're working on the same things. I, I just wonder, in, in which places does the Board of Education have an explicit action that it needs to do in these goals? In, for example, Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three? And in which are we supporting, advising, and approving the work of the administration in the district? So I, I, policy is the, is the easy one, and I understand that we have a policy, we've established a policy committee that's specific. But for example, I think it's come up previously, in communication, I think there, I suspect that there's an explicit action that the board can take to communicate the actions of, and understanding of what the board does, what we do, what topics are on the agenda, how to get more people to workshops, all that sort of stuff, that I don't really feel are necessarily the responsibilities of the district and the administration, but more the responsibilities of the board. So in some cases, I find it hard to differentiate in these, what's our role, what's Dr. Benante's administration's role? And maybe that's clearer to people who've been through this before, but that's kind of where I'm struggling and why I'm a little bit more interested in having, yeah, I'd love to have, we need to get through X pages of policy, and yeah, we need to do a better job of communicating board. That's where my head is.
John, I'm going to tend to disagree actually with the communication piece, because this board, the majority of us have been together for the past four years, and we've tried many different avenues of communicating. And it does take the cooperation of the administration, because we're not one unit. We need support from the administration in communicating. So for me, I tend to think that it's our responsibility, yes. It's the public's responsibility to learn, yes. But we also need support of our administrators with clear communications from them, so that we can be effective in our community.
Totally get that. I just have a problem, so for example, Goal One, establish and implement a structured continuous review. I'm not, I don't see the board do, like, we're going to oversee it, but I have no curricular guidance or any involvement. Whereas, to your point, in Goal Three, I think there is a very specific role for the board. So I have a hard time kind of finding roles and responsibilities in here.
Yeah, but in Goal One, for example, you know, we're talking about evidence of effectiveness, right? Professional development plan. That, that is the board. We, we have a role in that. We're, we're the ones saying, yeah, go ahead, spend that money. You know, we're the ones putting it into the budget, supporting it, so that the plans can happen. You know, they all happen together. Those decisions all, all happen as a unit. So the board does have a role in all of these things. You know, the idea of what are reviewing programs? Well, we just talked about how we're going to have the elementary, middle, and high school detail reports that will be reviewing programs for us, right? So we're holding them accountable, we're going to talk to them, we're going to ask them questions. So there are ways that the board gets involved with all of these things in an advisory, supervision-y kind of way, but we, we do do those.
Yes. Do we have a non-advisory role in any of these boards? In any of these goals?
Yeah. I mean, in the communication piece, we're not advising that, we are doing that.
Okay. So that's, that's...
The bond referendum piece, we have a role in that. We're the ones talking about it at board meetings and organizing with the Buildings and Grounds Committees, that are board committees, and we're talking about how to make that work and making sure that that is communicated to the public and financed and...
It's our decision to move a bond referendum forward if we wanted to or not. So yes, B&amp;G will communicate, Dr. Benante will communicate with us, Ms. Dinea will communicate, all of that. But ultimately, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and we are handling projects, you know, need to be handled. So...
Maybe this is a topic for a retreat, because I'll, I'll be, I mean, I think I'm more aligned with John right now, that I can sort of abstractly understand our role, but when I think about in January, how would I determine the extent to which we had been successful in meeting some of these goals? I think especially the first one. And I don't want to, I don't think that this meeting right now is, is the place for that, because to be honest, I think to some extent, I need to increase, like, how maybe I've understood the board's goals and the board's role in having goals has, has really been formed by what we've done the past few years, but I, and, and maybe Margaret's right, it's something that we have to determine at the end of the year, or, and maybe it's a lack of, of creativity on my part, but I, understa, knowing how to really objectively determine whether we've met our goals at the end of this year based on, on these goals, whether we've fulfilled our responsibilities, how we would do that is not clear to me personally.
So let's take Goal Number Three. In our goal...
I'm thinking specifically about Goal One.
So we'll go three, two, one, just for now. Goal Number Three. Our goal has always been to be great communicators, transparent. We can't do that alone. We know that for sure. We can't do that alone. So we'll have a separate goal that says we're going to be effective communicators, the same as this goal. But, okay, we'll put it on a separate goal. Goal Number Two. Now, mind you, Goal Two and Three have been our goals for the past...
At least two years.
Two years? Same goals that the board has had. So we'll pull that out, put it on ours. The one we're in question here is Goal One. I'm having a hard time understanding how we really separate ourselves from this, because we're ultimately responsible, that these students here are getting the best education possible, and we're being fiscally responsible while doing that. That's really our goal, right? I think that's, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that's what Goal One is getting at for us. I, I, I'm okay.
I agree. I feel like it's very clear to me. I think it's just a different way of thinking about it.
Mm-hmm.
So it may just be like a data-driven versus a, you know, I don't know, qualitative versus quantitative way of looking at things, you know? I see what you guys are saying. You got, you know, I, I get it. I get what you're looking for. But I, I don't know that board service is really always that defined.
So I'm going to, okay.
I don't know. It's just, it isn't for me, but I get it.
And if you think about all of our previous goals, really, we've had discussion, and wouldn't we be doing the same this year? I don't know. I'm just...
I think, I think if we had separate goals, it would be, you know, organizing a bond referendum and making sure it gets passed. It would be continuing clear communication with the public. And it would be policy manual. Those would probably be our three goals, two of which are here. The policy one isn't, but I'm okay with a policy committee being a, a step in the right direction on that.
But if you all don't feel comfortable, I'm okay with, we'll pass these as Dr. Benante's.
No, no, no. I want to, I, I, I like, I like, I like passing them as the district goals. I, I think I'll continue to try and think for myself how I can be sure that we're, you know, we're, we're reflecting, and, and maybe it's making sure that we have a retreat in January, and we stop and, and pause and really think about what, 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 whether there are different things that the board could be doing.
Well, we have a goal update, I think is scheduled for January, right? Our goals update?
Yeah.
So maybe we could also schedule a retreat around that time and use that as our, our topic and see how we're doing.
But that's what we've always done. So I don't, I'm not sure, I guess that's what I'm having a hard time.
No, but we haven't always geared a retreat around goals.
Not the retreat towards the goals, but we've always discussed our goals.
Yeah.
And reviewed and...
But, but, but not specifically around, you know, evidence.
Right.
And I think that that makes a lot of sense. If we were to touch base in January, see how the goals are going, and specifically towards an evidence-based discussion, and see if everybody's still comfortable. Maybe opinions will change. That you'll be like, oh, it's good, and Laura will be like, I need more numbers.
I also think the policy can fall under Goal Three.
Oh, actually, that's a really good point.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a stretch, but it's, it's, it's true. I mean, it is about how do we communicate our expectations as a district with the public as policy, really.
I think that makes sense. Okay.
All right.
So we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So John, give us a leap of faith for six months.
Thumbs up. Those in the audience...
Would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the district goals for 2018-2019 as presented. And I should add, a copy of these goals will be included in the minutes of the board meeting.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
It was close there for a minute.
With you, and it's going to be great.
It's going to be fun.
It's going to be great.
Just a note, so we'll, we'll distribute the goals internally tomorrow, because we can handle that via email, but we'll also put together a communication for families. Laura, I know we spoke about that, doing something jointly, just to notify community members that they're on our website, give an overview of what the goal areas are. Obviously, I want to try to fit this all on one page, so I want to make sure it's something that people are aware of.
And I think it's going to be helpful if we describe to the public that this is something new that we're doing this year, and we're willing to, you know, give it a shot and revisit it, that we'll revisit it in January and at the end of the year, and make sure that it worked the way we wanted it to, and if not, we'll revert. Okay. The approval of the resolution to post contracts resulting in an annual expenditure of $100,000 or more.
Okay. Are you ready for me to read this one?
Actually, are there any questions or comments before we do this? Sorry.
It's okay. That's why I'm checking. Actually, I'm going to open the door again.
It's warm.
It's warm.
Um, I know last meeting, we had some discussion. Peggy suggested some language change. I'm, Jen, maybe you could shed some light. Was this resolution prior to Board Docs? Do you know if...
Oh, uh, yeah.
It was prior to us having Board Docs?
Yeah, for sure.
Because at this point, I don't understand, if we have Board Docs and the contracts are in Board Docs, aren't they basically on the website?
The contracts are often in executive content, though.
Not ones that we're approving.
No.
Once they become approved, they get moved. They're supposed to be, at least.
Should be moved. I can confirm that.
So Board Docs is really a location on the website? It's just a space?
Yeah, it's a portal, so it's, you can access Board Docs via our website.
Right? So basically, we're...
Double duty-ing to make sure...
Are we talking about putting it in two different places? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, let's just think through this. So I'm trying to think of a recent contract or work agreement that may have been approved. We would have it on the board, probably under executive content to act upon. I don't know if we would move a work agreement to public out of executive content.
Well, doesn't it usually get attached in minutes? Or no?
The actual contract?
Yeah.
Uh, no, they do not.
They do not.
No.
So then, by this resolution, we would then post that work agreement or contract on the website. There's others, though, that very well may be in public content, but I don't think we can say, guarantee that all of them are in the public content.
So I think what I'm struggling with is Board Docs is part of the website. So if it's on Board Docs, why are we defining it? This is the question I was having with you, when you're saying it was before Board Docs. Well, if it's on the website, Board Docs is just a part of the website, so it's on the website.
Board Docs isn't a part of the website.
There's a link to it.
Board Docs is, we are, we can link, Board Docs is linkable on our website. You can easily access Board Docs from our website. But Board Docs is a separate online software system that is not part of our website.
So you could log into Board Docs without going through our website?
Correct.
Yes.
Like you do.
No, I go through the website all the time.
I always go through the website. I've never gone any other way, which is why I was confusing me.
I go BoardDocs.com. You know what? You know what? I can't log in that way, for whatever reason. I was just telling Ann that earlier.
Here's the other thing, through Board Docs, if we go, if somebody goes through Board Docs, it's right, you guys are right to say that, well, the contracts are in there, they could search and find it, if it's pulled out of public content, I mean, pulled into public content, which I'm not sure it all is. But on the website, it's very clearly placed under contracts, under administrative resource, whatever it's placed under. It's very clear, if somebody's looking for the HFA contract, they can find it on the right page.
On employee resources.
Employee resources.
God, I didn't realize they were separate.
So, it's much easier to search those contracts on the website than it would be on Board Docs, much more reliably.
Agree. The search functionality on Board Docs is not the best.
And it's not the best, especially if you're trying to do it on your smartphone. Right? Because there's not, there's not an app. It's only a, it's a website. So, if you're not in front of a computer, it's even harder to get what you need.
All right. So, Jen, you may know the original intent of this was, I think you said last time, for vendors?
Yeah, it was mostly for vendors' contracts, just, it was, the idea was, if I'm correct, was that the, if the school district is, you know, paying $100,000 to someone or some entity or more, then it's a substantial commitment. The district is making a commitment of substance, you know? That's why it was $100,000 and it wasn't $20,000. We're making a commitment of substance, and the public should be very aware of that. That's not to say they're, they can't be aware of the $20,000 contracts. It's just that we make it very easy for them to be aware of the $100,000 or more. You know, the public can see any contract that we've made. But the idea was, $100,000 is a big commitment, and we should be extra upfront about it.
So, that was the questions we had last meeting, was what contracts are going on here? What contracts are we anticipating? Right? Because then we came to discussions about.
Salaries.
Salaries.
Does every teacher who's making more than $100,000, are they going to speak for on that?
It's called the HFA contract, and it's on Board Docs. I mean, and it's on the website.
Right, and there would be no public document that necessarily stipulates.
This teacher's earning this.
This teacher's earning, it's public information that's accessible. You can access it through C-3 New York or whatnot, because it's contained in the state repository or database. But the HFA contract would outline, if a teacher's at Step 20, they're receiving X salary. So, it's implied, I guess, at that point. But I wouldn't want us, so posting the HFA contract is not, or the HAA contract, or individual work agreements for non-union employees is not an issue. If we had to create something which stipulated every employee who earns over, you know, a separate document, say, "Well, let's talk about that."
Well, right, but then we have to be careful the way it's worded.
I think we may need to.
I think they're employee agreements, though. I don't think they're considered contracts. Correct me if I'm wrong. When you're talking about with a teacher, I don't think they're considered contracts. It's an employee, it's an employee agreement with a, with a union.
Yeah, and I, just from what I'm hearing, I don't think it really is the intent to drill down to the level of what an individual teacher or principal may be making, although that, I think we could say with confidence, it's there if you want to find out.
It's all there, yeah.
The information, you may have to make some connections a little more, you may have to make some inferences, I should say, on teachers' contracts, just because it doesn't list individual teacher names. But if you know a teacher's been here for a certain period of time, you know what they're making. And by the, and it's, when they were appointed is in the board minutes. The other vendor contracts, obviously, we would take steps to post. Some we have, but we have not posted all of those.
I think we just have to be careful that all these contracts do get on the website some way, somehow. Make sure it happens, and that we're not held liable if it doesn't happen.
Right. Wow. We're liable to the, to the community, and just that there's trust that we've done it.
Okay, maybe we need to put in here a timeline. Contracts, like, so that they're posted within 60 days?
Yeah, I think that's fair. My, I think the piece that comes up for me, or on our end in managing it, is if the work is complete, so let's say we have a contract with a vendor for a three-year period of time. After that three years is over, we take it down, because it's no longer an active contract?
Yeah.
Right? As long as we're in agreement on that, that's how I would approach it. If it's an active contract, it's posted. If it's not, or no longer, we move beyond that time period, we take it off.
So, let's say accidentally, a contract doesn't get to the website.
I'm just saying.
I may miss one. So, I would just say, as long as you notify me, and it falls within these parameters, it will be up within a few days.
Right, and this says.
And I don't physically, myself, post them on, so I, I'm asking somebody else to do it, in fairness to them. We'll give them a couple of days to do it.
Right, but you're the one signing those documents, or.
Most, yes.
Or Ann is. I mean, it's one of you. So, it's, you guys sign the contracts. Sometimes we are also signing them, depending on if it's also the board needs to approve it. And then, once it gets signed, you hand it off to be filed or placed on the website, or both. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify that I think this initial resolution was probably prior to us having Board Docs, where these were on anyway, right? So, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to clarify those few things. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments. We can move forward with it.
Yeah, and I think the concern, Laura, that you're mentioning is, you know, do we have the staff to be doing all this uploading? And I'm hearing from Dr. Benante that we do, that it's fine, it's not that big a deal, he's going to hand it off, and it's going to be up, and if it's not up, let him know, and it'll be up in a couple of days.
Yeah, I think the, what I, I don't mean, I know you directed that at Laura, but just to clarify where I'm at, I believe we're in a perfectly fine place to manage this.
Okay.
I don't, unless I'm totally missing something. You know, we're talking about a handful of contracts that we can scan in the PDFs and post. So, now, if we were to get into a major building project, where we had a litany of vendors we were contracting with for various aspects of a building project, we'd probably want to talk about that and what your expectations are for what's going up and what's not in those agreements with those entities now.
That would be reasonable, I think.
It's going to happen for some time, but that's the only thing that's popping in my mind right now, where I can see that becoming a bit of a, a bit to manage. But we're not there, so we'll talk about it when we are.
Perfect. Okay, so.
Andrew, how are you with technology, by the way? Is there anything you feel like you could stand a PDF, post it to the website?
Although, I'm competent with technology, but if you're looking for some person to set up things, I can recommend you.
You know somebody better, yeah. That's good. Thanks. I'll take you up on that.
That's true. We can have a kid do it.
They're public information.
They're probably going, "Done."
Okay, so Ms. Farmarara, would you like to read the resolution?
Yeah, are there any changes to the resolution?
I would have liked the word "may" somewhere in there, but I think everybody's comfortable. And Dr. Benante seems pretty confident, so we're going to move forward.
We'll get it done.
Okay.
I'll read it as written.
Okay.
"Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the posting of contracts that will result in an annual expenditure of $100,000 or more on the district's website, and the board reserves the right to post additional contracts on the website at their discretion." May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. And the next item is the approval of the CSE/CPSE placement recommendations, and the recommended action is, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any communication from the public at this time? You know, Andrew, I apologize, I didn't give you an opportunity earlier in the meeting to, if you wanted to say a few words, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm a junior here at Halbain. I've been at this school most of my life, from kindergarten to 7th grade, I went here. Then I transferred to Poughkeepsie Day School for 8th and 9th grade, and now I'm in my second year back. I really enjoy advertising and making videos, and I do a lot of volunteer work at my church. And that's, that's a summary of me.
Thank you, Andrew. We are extremely happy.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here and do this for the next year. Thank you.
And you forgot to mention that you're into theater.
Yeah. There's a rehearsal right now.
That he's missing, but you'll have to be forgiven. Okay, if there's no additional communication from the public, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Safe travels. Safe trip home.
Safe trip home.